Hello, I am your proud superintendent, Dr. Leslie Torres Rodriguez. I am leading the crucial process of reimagining and restructuring our school district. I need you, all of you, to be significant partners in our process. We are doing this imperative work to deliver on our commitment to ensure improved student outcomes and equitable access to resources for each and every one of our beautiful and capable students. When we have completed this process together, we will hold in our hands a stronger, more equitable school district designed to serve all students well, a plan built by the entire community that will benefit the entire community. We at Hartford Public Schools are coordinating the process, but you, the community, families, students, teachers, and all of our stakeholders are the voices and the minds that must inform this work. By sharing your thoughts, you will help to co-create our district model. Our work together, which takes place over the coming months in community meetings with families, partners, and schools, will culminate in the presentation of recommendations for district models for excellence, different ways in which the district can be reimagined while ensuring the health and viability of our neighborhoods and continuing to provide access to opportunities and services for our families and students. For news about meetings and ongoing updates on our process, please visit our district website at www.hartfordschools.org.
Good evening. Thank you so much, I appreciate that. Good evening. As Chairman of the Hartford Board of Education, I hear my call this meeting to order a December 19th, 2017 regular meeting. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers, the board, the superintendent. Sure? Okay, can you hear me now? You're welcome. So I'll start over. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present, to our TV viewers. The board, the superintendent, and I are pleased to have you join us to celebrate achievement, review information, and make policy decisions related to the effective operation of the Hartford Public Schools. This is a regular meeting and all items will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by law. The Hartford Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve the problems of individuals. And let me say that again, we are not here to make management decisions or solve the problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent. The monthly meetings of the board are open to the public. They are not timed, they are the time when the board conducts this business in the public, but this is not meetings with the public. Therefore, comments from the audience will be confined to the time designated for the public to address the board. Decorum and courtesy are important elements in an effective board meeting. Please silence your cell phones and communication devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that these proceedings be accurately recorded, I may ask for a periodic order from time to time should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken the time this evening to join us. We are very proud of our school system and we thank you for your interest in Hartford Public Schools. Mr. Flores, read this in Spanish.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Buenas noches. El presidente de la Junta de Educación de Hartford ha llamado a orden esta reunión ordinaria de la junta del 19 de diciembre de 2017. Damos una cálida bienvenida a todas las personas presentes y a nuestros televidentes. La junta y la superintendente se complacen que se han unido a nosotros para celebrar logros, revisar información, y tomar decisiones relacionadas con el funcionamiento efectivo de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Esta es una reunión ordinaria. Todos los asuntos que serán discutidos o dados en esta tarde han sido notificados como lo requiere la ley estatal. Como Junta de Educación de Hartford estamos aquí para establecer metas, escuchar los informes de la superintendente, aprobar los presupuestos, contratos, y nombramientos de personal, y establecer normas para el distrito. No estamos aquí para tomar decisiones administrativas o resolver problemas individuales. La administración es la responsabilidad de la superintendente. Las reuniones mensuales de la junta están abiertas al público. Solo el momento en que la junta lleva a cabo su tarea de gobernar el sistema escolar en un espacio público. Las reuniones regulares no son reuniones con el público. Por lo tanto, los comentarios de la audiencia se limitarán al tiempo designado para el público dirigirse a la junta. El decoro y la acordecía son elementos importantes en reuniones públicas eficaces. Por favor, silencie sus teléfonos celulares o dispositivos de comunicación y absténganse de hablar mientras otros están hablando. Ya que es mandato legal de que los procedimientos sean grabados con precisión, es posible que tengamos que pedir orden periódicamente si el ruido interfiere con nuestras capacidades de grabación. Nos complace que se haya tomado el tiempo esta tarde para unirse a nosotros. Estamos muy orgullosos de este sistema escolar y le damos gracias por su interés en las escuelas públicas de Hartford.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. Thank you, Mr. Flores. And now we're going to do our public statement. Mrs. Clement or Mr. Flores, who's going to read this?
We, as a board, in collaboration with the superintendent and district leadership, are committed to cultivating a culture of excellence at all levels of Hartford Public Schools. We thank you for taking the time to attend tonight's board meeting. We appreciate you coming out to learn more about Hartford Public Schools and for sharing your thoughts and concerns. We have established a protocol to track and respond to concerns raised. We want you to know that we take your concerns seriously and to that end, we will have staff available for immediate follow-up if follow-up is required. After you have finished speaking, a staff member will come up to you ready to take down your information. They will follow up with an update within 48 hours. As a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. At the two-minute mark, Ms. Santiago will ring the bell letting you know that you have one minute left. At the second bell, please wrap up your comments. Now, Mr. Flores will read this in Spanish.
Thank you, Luciano. Nosotros, la Junta de Educación, en colaboración con la superintendente y personal del distrito, estamos comprometidos a cultivar una cultura de excelencia en todos los niveles de la escuela superior de la escuela pública de Hartford. Les agradecemos que haya tomado el tiempo para asistir a la reunión de la junta esta noche. Les agradecemos su participación y su deseo de aprender más sobre las escuelas públicas de Hartford y también por compartir sus pensamientos y preocupaciones. Nosotros tomamos sus preocupaciones muy seriamente y hemos establecido un protocolo para el seguimiento y respuesta a inquietudes planteadas. Tenemos personal disponible para seguimiento inmediato para los casos que lo requieren. Una vez que usted haya terminado de hablar, un miembro del personal estará disponible para tomar su información. Esa persona investigará su caso y se comunicará con usted dentro de 48 horas. Le recordamos que tienen tres minutos para hablar. Cuando hayan pasado dos minutos, la señorita Santiago sonará el timbre dejándole saber que le queda un minuto. Al segundo sonido, por favor, termine sus comentarios.
First, we have Lucy Smith.
Good evening, everyone. I am here in behalf of my son, who is in ninth grade in the Hartford Public High School, the Green Technology Academy. One of my main concerns that I have is safety. I believe strongly that if you want your child to be adequately educated, safety and health must be present. There was an incident that just happened a week ago that really, really has me overwhelmed, shocked, sad, hurt. And there is a lot of people in Hartford High that want to do good, but unfortunately, they do not have the power. They're understaffed. The students, they are roaming around as if they own the school. I don't see enough being done by the staff, teachers, security guards. I want to make sure that you take this in consideration, that safety is a must. My son is a high academic achiever, who is dyslexic. He is differently abled, not disabled. My son has six As, one B. Out of those six As, three of them 100%. Yet the school has failed him, and I do not accept that. If I give you an amazing child, one that you do not have to reprimand correct, I expect you to do your job. And I want to take the time and to thank all the parents in Hartford that really, truly, truly care for their children. I don't want to people underestimate our power. I do not want anything less than but the best. Please, make safety a number-one priority so these children can learn and get educated. That's our future. Thank you for your time.
Hi, Cynthiaany.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Hiya Cynthiaany. First, I must say I want to wish you all a Merry Christmas and a happy and a healthy new year. As always, thank you for serving. I am here because I want to talk about two or three things, about the consolidation for Hartford High, making it into one school instead of three, okay? I think that's really important for you to start looking at doing that, all right? I heard the young lady talking about safety at Hartford High. I've known, I've been over there, I've seen where they're doing hall sweeps now so no one should be in the hall, and they're making the effort to do it. I also want to talk about the fact that now that we are having more kids in the building, I'm hoping that you superintendent will go to the state and start looking for funding to get the resource in that building, also in Buckley High School too. We are going to be at the max and we need to make sure that the resource is there to help these young people, making sure we have the proper teacher, the social worker, whoever we need in those buildings. I think the only way we can succeed if we do have the resource to do our jobs in our schools. That's really, really important, okay? It's not a matter of how many buildings we have, it's a matter of what kind of a quality we have in those buildings. And I always go back to say, when there is quality in a building, a parent do not want to move from their neighborhood. So if you can get focused on that with all this consolidation that you're doing, it really don't make any difference if you don't have the resource to address those issues in these buildings. So I want you to take that into consideration. I'm also here because I want to support Brooke, a classical magnet. Since she has taken over that school, things have changed. It's more positive. She's a great leader. She's making sure that she has an open door for her kids that comes into her staff, everyone, the parents, everyone are feeling much more upbeat about that building. So I'm hoping that we can bring that building back up to code to make it be on the map of Hartford, okay? It used to be a great school when our previous team Sullivan was there, so I'm hoping that we can make sure she have the resource and the leadership that she'll take to make sure things are happening good over there. People are feeling very happy about that over there. So I think probably that's about it. I do want to make sure that you understand with the consolidation plan that we're doing it on an even base and not just more closing more schooling in the north end and, you know, I know the schools in South Hartford are at max most likely, but we have to make sure that the kids that comes from the north end have quality in their building so we don't have to bus them. Busing costs the city a lot of money, so you need to take those things in consideration when you're making your plan, all right? So again, I just want to wish you all a happy and a healthy year, okay? And I am here to support whatever is going to be best for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tiana Minut.
Hello, my name is Hannah Minor. I am a student that goes to Hartford High, Green Tech. I am here representing Compass Peace Builder and I'm here to talk to you about restorative justice. So here's a question. Sorry. So a little question I want to ask you. Have you ever heard of the game called telephone? Yeah? So rumors is like the game telephone. One person might say this, oh, someone looks pretty, and then that word can turn into petty. So most of the time, this can end up in a fight. And even with the closest friends, it can end their relationship. So even with fighting, sometimes these students are being pressured, they get anxiety, and they don't want to lose their disrespect to that school. So they feel as if they have no choice but to fight, but truly, they don't even know why they're fighting. So restorative justice allows both parties to express their feelings, to tell both sides of their story. It may even repair their relationship. And it can also teach them a lesson that it's best to see that student, to talk to them face-to-face than to assume and buy into that game of telephone. And also, you know, when they get suspended after that fight, they get suspended for a week, even more sometimes. That takes time off of learning. With restorative justice, it gives them the option to repair their relationship, to stay in school than to get suspended and forever have grudges against that person. So please, just take in consideration and help these students repair their relationship, help these students stay in school and have a better life. It can also change how people see Hartford and their schools. Thank you.
Millie Arcegias.
Young man, did you have something to say?
It's just one person.
And before you begin, if anyone needs translation, Martha Bentham and Shelley Ma are over here, so just contact the nice lady here and they'll help you with translation. I think we have one in the back up there. Thank you, sir. Proceed.
Can you tell us your name?
For your record, your name.
Okay. Hi, my name is Lorenzo and I'm a Compass Junior Peace Builder, youth advocate, and I'd like to talk to you today about restorative justice system and how we can get it implemented into our school system. I think that the system will work better than excessively punishing students and instead of skipping straight to like a suspension and a student missing class and affecting their education, I think we can give them a chance to work out the situation in a different manner than we've been doing now. I've seen an instance of students being suspended for wearing their sweater or refusing to take it off because it's cold in class. Recently, in my school, there was a student I know, he was suspended, no expelled, because he had a conflict with another student and they didn't want to like, because how it escalated outside of school, they chose to expel him instead of, you know, trying to figure out the situation between the two students. And the other student ended up leaving either way. And while doing the restorative justice practices within school, I've noticed that it's actually like helping the students work out their differences and being able to communicate with one another much more frequently than we were doing before. And I think this could really help our school system and we could see more positive behavior from the students and they have more drive to, you know, behave better and get their grades up. And thank you.
Thank you.
Millie Arcegias.
Good evening, everyone. Superintendent, Chairman of the Board, and Board members. My name is Millie Arcegias. I'm a resident of Hartford. I'm also the Hartford Parent University Executive Director, and I'm also a mom. I'm a mom first, right? So, but what I wanted to share with you tonight is that the stars couldn't be better aligned for what we are about to embark on. We started in 2007, for those of you that weren't here, to embark on school reform, where year after year after year, for four years, there were schools being closed, consolidated, or redesigned. Our kids were at the very, very bottom of the entire state. And I have lived to see this reform and see the success for four years, to see our kids rise, to see our kids be successful. But I also have lived to see it fall. So I say that because it's going to take all of us to make sure that we sustain this work. I believe the superintendent, this superintendent has gone over and beyond to include parents in the community in this process from the beginning. I believe this board has changed how they work to be more inclusive and to work on policy that affects the children's learning. I believe that what we are about to embark on today, we have to think back to a place we were and only to see right now that we were there, right now we are at the same place we were in 2007. So we cannot look back anymore. We have to look forward, and I have a strong belief in this board, and a strong belief in the superintendent, and a strong belief in the parents and the community and the students of Hartford that we can make it through this. So I thank each and every one of you.
Anthony Sanzego.
Thank you. My name is Anthony Sanzego and I'm a teacher at the Capital Prep at our Magnet School. I've been teaching there for the last five years. I'm also a result of the New York City Public School System. And as a New York Public School student, I was told constantly on a regular basis from kindergarten all the way through college that you, Anthony, are from the Bronx, you're Puerto Rican, you just need to know your place. Your place is as a blue-collar worker, you don't belong in college. If you go to college, you can be a custodian, but that's about it. Can't go any further than that. Working at Capital Prep, thank you, working at Capital Prep, I get to tell my students every day, my preschool students, you're going to college. My two-and-a-half-year-old student asked me the other day, "I'm going to college." I said, "Man, you're two, you're not half-years-old right now, but if you stay in school, you keep on working hard, you're going to college." And I'm so proud every day that I get to say that to my students because nobody said that to me in New York City. None of my teachers ever said that to me. So being part of a school, that is part of what we believe, that's part of what we believe in every day. Makes me so proud. Makes me so proud to be there. My tie is all messed up, but I still wear it because it's Capital Prep and because I'm that proud that being part of that school. And thinking about the reform that's being considered, I beg you, please think about my students. My students are pre-K to 12th. I don't think my students just as my three-year-olds, my two-and-a-half-year-olds, my students are also the 12th graders who are getting ready to graduate. And our students graduate 100% every year. And so we need to keep that in consideration. Let's keep that part of our future for Hartford. Let's get our students believing, knowing that they're going to college. So please, let's keep Capital Prep, Capital Prep rolling the way it is. Thank you.
Henry Johnson.
Good evening, Board of Education and Superintendent of Schools. This evening, I would like to talk about my major, pardon me, major, major concern, and that is closing of some of our schools. I can't tell this board what a concern it is, not only for the families that would be placed in a new environment, but of course, our HFT members who will also be placed in new schools. I am greatly concerned about the number of HFT members who may be displaced and the positions that may change in one way or another. We await the information about the changes that will be coming our way this evening. However, I do feel that the good folks of the Hartford Public Schools should have had some information concerning this matter way ahead of two days before we leave for a vacation. It is also much wiser to have people that may have their lives changed environmentally to be given a heads-up of what's coming and not waiting three days before the school system closes. For those that will be having any kind of a change to their existing environment now before a vacation period, to hear of a change of work environment is not an optimal time to get this information. It is most unfortunate that here we are waiting to hear from many news that could not be good. For those whose lives will change tonight due to school closing, it is very difficult. We strongly recommend that in the future, any large changes being told to the Hartford family directly as soon as possible, not waiting for an event, and that's what I feel I'm waiting for. There is much anxiety over this plan, and it should have been There is much anxiety over this plan, and it should have been shared well before this evening. So, to all those in this room who are fearful, anxious, hopefully, we will get some kind of answers in the future for any other large, large event that happens. Thank you.
Wayne, Wayne Sampson?
Good evening. Evening, Community Board Members and Superintendent Torres. We are Groh Hartford Program, uh, Youth Program, here to speak tonight about our vision for our schools. Groh Hartford Youth Program is leadership, organization, and engagement program working on with students for social justice in our school, in our food systems. We want to thank the Board of Education for all this work today facing the many crucial and urgent issues in our school. First, we want to say that learning does not only happen in the classroom. We are learning our words when we notice our word funds are not working. We don't get the need to be helped in school. And especially when the foods are all soggy, lacking good taste, and unappealing to look at. Students and families deserve dignity. The physical building, the interactions with the staff, academics, and the food that we all eat, needs to be reflected on the school systems that respect the values of youth. Based on what we need, we are not adults, but we know ourselves best. There are, there's been conversations about the fact that we should be grateful for our lunch, because it's free, but why should we be grateful for anything that's lacking in what we need? Many parents and students are thankful for lunch, free lunch, but our bigger vision is towards the city of students, um, parents and caretakers, free of poverty, earning a livable wage, and not depending on what anyone else thinks of them. Our 10 Slice of Justice Campaign has 10 improvements we hope to see in the high schools, in high schools across Hartford. We are grateful to see that the district is implementing Slice 8 Hot Breakfast, Slice 10 Youth Voice, and waiting on update on Slice 5 Knowledge Behind Food. Slice number six is certainly not heating up. A major way our food in our schools can be improved is if every school has a full kitchen with proper equipment and knowledgeable staff on site, preparing meals that students, that students want to eat. Tonight, our question for the board is what is being done to ensure that the quality of the food and portions of our food, our schools continue to improve? We realize that this may not seem a top priority for the district facing zombie changes as of right now, but we urge you to keep the youth voice at front of your work. As we know best for what we need in our future. Thank you for your time. We are looking forward for continuing with you and to ensure the best health and experience that we can for Hartford students.
Raquel Calderon? Raquel Calderon? Michael Downs?
Good evening, Board Members, Superintendent. Uh, my name is Michael Downs. I live at 74 Rosemont Street in Hartford. I'm president of the Hartford Federation of Substitute Teachers. I think first, uh, it's in order to, uh, thank, uh, two board members, Robert Cotto and, uh, Michael Brescher, for all the good work they've done, uh, in the past years. Uh, Michael Brescher for his extensive, uh, experience in education, going back all the way to the, uh, probably to the 60s. Uh, I think he started in 1968. Um, and, uh, Robert Cotto for his, uh, vast knowledge of education. And, uh, I know he teaches it every day and, uh, he keeps up to date with it. We'll miss that. The next thing I want, I want to speak about is, uh, the fact that this week, uh, last Wednesday, this past Sunday and Monday, there were a lot, uh, extensive articles on the, on DCF and the problem that they had with the, uh, the death of Matthew Torado, a Hartford Public School student, who, um, was under their, uh, uh, their, uh, care, I think, uh, they, they had an open case on him. And, um, he had, uh, he was, uh, uh, was, uh, going to school at, uh, Oak Hill School for the handicapped, the voluntarily disabled, and he hadn't attended school for a while and, uh, somebody just lost track of him and he starved to death. And, uh, glad to see that, uh, now the state legislature is, uh, uh, investigating the, this issue. Um, it's a very serious issue. Uh, but I think the main, uh, there are, there are, there's fault to lie everywhere, including the Hartford Public Schools, but the, the primary fault lies with the Department of Children and Families and their commissioner. I also want to, uh, mention the budget. Many people in this city have given back to the, uh, 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 millions of dollars, to the point of millions of dollars in the city and, uh, in, on those that work for the Board of Education, as the workers in the city. Many cities, uh, many of our citizens, including myself, are paying now, paying higher taxes for automobiles, are paying higher taxes for our, uh, property. And, uh, um, so when it, when it, when we say that all of the buildings that we own, the city of Hartford owns, all of the school buildings should be utilized. Certain programs may be closed, certain, uh, schools may be combined, and the building that the one school, uh, who, who, who was combined with another school, that school building will be used for something else for the, uh, uh, for the educational purpose or another, another education group will move in. And any of the, and I'll just end by saying that any of these, uh, programs that are in leased buildings, those are contracts, uh, all the workers had to give back, and the people of the city of Hartford had to give back. These people, uh, that have these contracts with the city of Hartford can forgive these contracts. And, uh, we could break the contracts and, and move these programs into buildings we own. Thank you.
I'm gonna call, uh, Raquel Calderon one more time, 'cause she came back.
Good evening, Dr. Torres and my board members. My name is Raquel Calderon and I reside in Hartford. I, I came here, um, to, for three things. I will, I, I am seeking a meeting with the Board of Directors for the Board of Education. Number two is, um, I'm asking the board to please consider, you know, when you're considering downsizing personnel, please, please don't consider teachers and staff for the better of the children. This is for the best interest of the children. In some schools, I already see that they have like about 28 students in one classroom, and that is way too much for a teacher. So, if you're going to consolidate, please do not add students like 28. They work better when they have less students in the classroom. And I really think that's way too much for the teachers. I think the teachers are doing a good job. And one of the interference with their teaching is cell phones. Cell phones is a big problem. They, some, some students are paying attention to cell phones and not to the teachers. So, we should consider enforcing that policy. Then the other thing, the, the other way you can save money is considering giving those jobs that you have for, and opening new jobs should not be considered to give to people who are already collecting money and having a second, second, you know, uh, second dipping. I think that's one way that you can give employment to, to a no higher rates. And the last thing that I wanted to say is I, I do support Capital Prep. The principal is awfully very welcoming. Every time I went there, she's excellent. She treats me as a guest teacher. She never calls me a sob. And I really appreciate that from her. Thank you. Good evening.
Is that complete public comment?
Thank you, Mrs. Glanville. So, what we're gonna do now is take item five, uh, which is the workshop session, and we're gonna do the district, district model, uh, part two restructuring recommendations. So, Dr. Torres, if you're ready, please proceed.
Good evening. Just, just wanna do a mic check? Both mics? So, good evening, everyone. I wanna thank everyone here tonight, uh, Mayor Lebronin, the board, the staff, the families, our corporate, community, higher ed partners I see here tonight, our faith-based leaders here tonight, and of course, our students for being part of the process that has gotten us to, uh, this point. We have had, uh, meetings, countless feedback sessions, planning sessions, difficult and honest conversations to get to the point where we are, uh, tonight, where I will be presenting recommendations. These are recommendations. Decisions have not been made. Those decisions rest with the board. Tonight is about recommendations. So, I thank all of you for sharing your perspectives and lending your expertise to the process. Uh, you know, several of you have reminded me that this process has been like no other in the history of Hartford Public Schools in terms of the engagement. And so, I hope that moving forward, we can continue to operate in that fashion. Uh, this process has been centered around, uh, encouraging voice, fostering leadership, and, uh, building our future together. And we are, we are changing the way that we do business in this district. Not just in this presentation tonight or the board vote in January. We have already changed the way that we, uh, do business by the way that we are engaging in this feedback and planning process, by putting the voices of our community and the students and our families, our staff and our partners at the center of the dialogue, and also, um, how we structure our work in our schools and our central office. Tonight, I'd like to review the implications of the Hartford Public Schools Network of Schools coming out of the comprehensive study. I'd like to outline my recommendations for the district model of excellence and, uh, discuss resource implications. When I talk about resources, I am referring to people, time, and money. So, those implications, what that means for the time, the people and the money, and how we allocate those, and then also, um, outstanding questions that, um, I have for, for the board, uh, to consider. I wanna reference that education resource strategies, uh, our technical support, our back office, uh, support is here. They are not here to do the presentation, however, just wanted to reference to the board that if you have any technical questions, they are available to answer those. We all know that our district work is based in a persistent, challenging context with challenges around deep student needs, persistently low performance, declining enrollment, right? We know that over the last four years, we have seen a 15% decline in our enrollment. That's, uh, equal to 2,000 students in the last four years. And so, the current state that we have is untenable. It is shaky, it is not safe, and so, it's time that we have to change. This is a graphic that we're familiar with. This just reminds us of the district planning process, which has, um, several phases of work. The first phase, uh, we have completed, and that, uh, focused on the development of a comprehensive study, uh, that the district helped to establish what I'm calling a fact base, right? Where is it that we are in terms of the, uh, the resources that we have, in terms of the progress that we're making, in terms of student outcomes, in terms of the state of our facilities and our priorities for the district? Uh, the next phase is where we are tonight, and that is the presentation of the re, uh, restructuring recommendations and opportunities. Uh, the recommendations will aim, uh, to help move us forward on our vision of a district model of excellence, and the board will need feedback from all stakeholders, all groups, parents, community members, teachers, administrators, in order to make their informed decision in January. So, the process is not over after the decisions are made, after the restructuring decisions are made, uh, we will begin to strategically design and plan for, uh, the model of excellence. So, strategic school design teams that are gonna be made up of district and school-based staff, family and community partners, will be formed so that we can plan and implement the new model and also support our schools in, uh, their transition. In November, I presented the District Reimagine, which really summarized what we heard from the community and established, uh, the universal practices and opportunities that we expect, uh, for every school and for every student. We know that great schools and, uh, uh, in great schools, students are supported in terms of their needs, in terms of their strengths. We know that, uh, schools are the stabilizing forces in neighborhoods. We know that great schools make sure that our students achieve their fullest potential, whether they're the two and a half year old at Capital Prep or the 15 year old, right, at Hartford Public High School Engineering Academy. We know that great schools must do that for all of our students, to make sure that they achieve their fullest potential. And we also know that great schools have strong teams of teachers who collaborate and operate as one team together. These are the guiding principles, uh, defined by our community, right? Great teaching and learning in every school, all schools having the resources, the staff, the district support that they need so that we can invest in the essentials and support all of our learners. Safe and equitable access to great schools and also pathways. We heard that over and over again from our families. They felt that particularly in our neighborhood schools, there, there wasn't a clear pathway from elementary to, uh, high school. And so, we have to ensure that, yes, we have, uh, welcoming learning environments, that we also have clear and logical pathways, that that access is equitable in all of our schools, neighborhood or magnets, and that we implement our restructuring, uh, decisions so that students in the greatest need schools have priority access to high-quality seats, and that we can have strategic levels of enrollment across our schools. We also heard, and we prioritizing around expanded family and community partnerships, knowing that we have to leverage, that we have to take advantage, right, of the partners and the resources, so that they can help us actualize on our commitment to our students. So, we need our partners, families, you are our partners, community-based organizations, you too are our partners. And so, we need you to co-create the learning plans and the opportunities for our students. Fiscal sustainability is also something that was prevalent to, uh, throughout the conversations. Making sure that the network of schools that do remain, that they're structurally and fiscally in terms of our money and our resources that are sustainable, that we can continue to create those programmings year after year in the short-term and long-term future. So, we have to write size the district and have an infrastructure, the way that we design our schools and structure them in a way that is responsible and that we're able to utilize the resources available, also in a responsible way. Based on what I heard from the community, these are our non-negotiables. At the elementary level, we have to make sure that at the very early grades, that students have access to intense literacy and numeracy. We need our students. We need our students, all of them, to read, write, listen, speak, think, and lead. At the middle levels, we need to ensure that our young adolescents experience developmentally appropriate, challenging, empowering, relevant learning that motivates and inspires who they are at that stage of their development. And at the high school level, making sure that we expand college and career development opportunities. This is something that I heard over and over again from our students. They weren't asking for additional technology. They weren't asking for the latest gadgets. They were asking me, Superintendent, make sure that we have our guidance counselors. Make sure that in this process, we have additional access to AP courses, dual enrollment courses, so that we can compete with what's happening in other districts throughout the region from our students. In terms of our practices, we have non-negotiables. And that is to redesign our schools so that we can, they can serve as community schools and hubs for their communities. So we do have a vast number of resources, partners and families. And we know that our students need support in and beyond the school day. We also have to guarantee that we have a strong adult culture, learning culture, that we build not only in terms of a structure to allow adults to have time to collaborate and learn from each other, but that we also allow professional practices that allow us as an organization to continue to improve ourselves and hold ourselves accountable to what we're saying we're gonna do on behalf of our students. We need a network of partnerships that ensures that all partnerships support the needs of our students and our schools. The resources have to be intentionally aligned to support student outcomes. We need a district designed so that everything feels, sounds, and acts in a coherent and logical way, which is why we need those pathways and grade configurations, as well as program progression so that our families and students are informed and they can plan ahead. Lastly, we have to ensure access. Every student must have access to high-quality seats and adequate resources year-round during the school day and beyond. These are the non-negotiables that were identified as a result of what we heard from you and what the data told us. These recommendations result in benefits for our schools. So by converting to, from a pre-K eight model to a pre-K five and six-eight, we support more enrichment options and better conditions for teacher-professional learning. By creating an elementary, middle, and high school model to serve every Hartford community, every zone, we support more equitable access to schools, building clear and logical pathways to graduation and beyond, and we're able to serve students in better facilities. By ensuring that schools serve as community schools, all schools serve as community schools, we build a deeper community partnership, provide more services throughout our community experts, and always create welcoming school environments for our students, staff, families, and the community. And by sustaining our work, by creating sustainability, sustainable sizes, we can ensure more resources for needed programming and improve our operational efficiency, which is something that we heard throughout as well. We do not take on these challenges of configuring the schools lightly. And the recommendations I'm going to share is only one part of the work we must do together. We will need new school models that let us use the resources in the most strategic way possible, with more support for our educators and a continuing dialogue with families and partners about how we keep getting better. If we do these things collectively, then Hartford Public Schools and Hartford as a city will be in a better, will be in a better position to not only give our students every opportunity they deserve for success, but also so that we can engage in dialogue at the city, at the state, and even with regional leaders to enhance opportunities even more. One of our top priorities over the next several years will be to attract families back to our system. By enacting the district models of excellence, we hope to establish programs that families and children will seek out. However, try as, as, as we might, we can't know the future. So even as we work to bring families back to our school system, we must also be prepared for the possibility that enrollment may continue to decline, maybe even faster than today. We must also recognize that every time we close a school, we create a potential gap, gap in access for students in that neighborhood, where small schools then become necessary in order to preserve access. We will also work to ensure that those schools have the support and the resources they need to be successful. So this work is gonna require trade-offs and some very difficult decisions. The worst thing we could do is not make decision. The worst thing we can do is not make a decision that is right in the long run, but hard for us to do right now in the short run. Some of this is gonna be hard, but I'm confident that with my recommendations if implemented, it will put us on a healthier path for our students to succeed. So in that light and under this proposal, nearly 80% of our current students will have the option to remain in their current schools. Asking more than 4,000 students to move to new schools is no small thing. So my recommendation is designed to make that transition as easy as possible. We are keeping students in the forefront of our minds during this rollout process. 100% of the displaced students have the option to move to a different school with their full cohort. 96% of displaced students are moving to improve the quality of their facilities and vacate our most rundown facilities. 72% of displaced students are guaranteed seats in other schools in their zone. So for these students with the amount of transition, we have ideas as to how to foster smooth transition. Right? Another way that we can keep students at the center of the rollout is by having a process that is investing in support of their transitions, whether that be holding school tours or open houses, providing summer bridge opportunities for families and staff, peer mentoring, shadowing opportunities, special advisory programs and supports for our sixth graders going into the new facilities, transition teams, and collaboration between schools and teams. So now I'd like to review my recommendations for the model of excellence. And we're gonna start by talking about neighborhood schools first, focusing on our middle grades and elementary grades, then the high schools, and then I'd like to talk about magnet schools. This map of our neighborhood schools today, as you can see, we have all kinds of grade configurations. Some elementary schools, some middle schools, some K-8 schools, some high schools, even a K-12 school. So this does create choice for our families, but it also creates a lot of complexity that everyone, from families, our educators, and our parents, have to manage. It also means that students' experiences differ throughout our district. Whether you're in an elementary school, a middle school, or a K-8 school, it affects the structures that teachers have to be effective. It affects the program model, the school culture, and the community, and the breadth, the amount of programs that we're able to offer. It also affects the clarity of the pathways. So in this sense, Hartford Public Schools is not different from districts all over the country, right? Faced with big challenges, our leaders have made a series of individual and perhaps reactive decisions. Each one, I'm sure, was made, and it made sense on its own, especially in the short term. But if we take a look, a longer look, a longer view look, right, we can see that we now have a system that does not have to be so challenging, so complex, with conditions that keep us from doing all that we want and must for our students. So through this process, we're seeking to create a more unified vision for our network of schools. That vision will still include diversity of options for families along with a set of structures that we can sustain, that we can keep going over the long haul. This map shows neighborhood schools where our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders attend. As you can see, most of our middle-grade students attend K-8 schools now. But because many families seek alternatives in middle schools when they leave, when their students finish fifth grade, our middle grades are particularly small. We have an average of 44 students per grade across the district. So remember, right, 44 students in a grade is very challenging to staff. It's difficult to have no more than two teachers per grade. So think of the middle schooler, right, the seventh grader. How could we create the expansive, extensive range of classes and enrichment opportunities that we want for them? With two teachers, you can only cover the bare essentials, not the robust programming that we hope to see and that we know our middle schoolers need. Pre-K eights that have only one to two classrooms per grade are difficult for a variety of reasons, especially at the middle school level. One thing I heard loud and clear in the community conversations was the desire to support rigorous instruction for all students. I kept hearing, Superintendent, make sure, doesn't matter how we end up, high-quality, rigorous instruction for all of our students, is what we heard. And so in a small school, students lack access to more diverse electives and enrichment opportunities. Teachers have less opportunity to collaborate and less flexibility to provide more intense support for students who are struggling. And we know that these are all things that must happen in order to support rigorous instruction. In an elementary, middle school model, we can offer a wider range of course offerings with more flexibility for teachers to learn, grow, and personalized instruction for our students. More after-school activities can also be offered. And we hope that we can get our sports team to see a boost from large, from large enrollment and larger talent pool. So with this transition to larger schools, we plan to design them so that every student is still known deeply by their adults in the building, working through advisory groups, homerooms, or family models. So to create a stronger middle school grade experience, we will operate, my recommendation, to operate four middle schools, one in each zone of the city. These are neighborhood middle schools. In order to achieve this, we will transition three of our current pre-K eights to become more dedicated middle schools. Dedicated middle schools and middle school programming, of course, address the unique learning needs of our adolescent learners. Creating the stronger middle school, middle grades experiences does ensure that every student in every zone in the city, regardless of where they live, can have access to that challenging, empowering, relevant middle school program. To support our younger students, we will expand our pre-K five model to all zones as well. This has specific benefits also. Grade sizes will increase, which will help create larger teacher teams for collaboration. While school sizes will not change dramatically, the new elementary school model can create a more age-appropriate environment for our youngest learners, while of course, the middle school model will get the unique supports that they need. I wanna also be clear that there are risks here as well. We know that the transition from fifth to sixth grade is important, and it is when many families look outside of our system for alternatives. That is why it is so important that we focus on creating a truly state-of-the-art middle school experience for our students. So I'm gonna go back a slide. To the middle school model that is being recommended. Martin Luther King Middle School, McDonough Middle School, Burr, recommended as operating as a middle school, and Milner Middle School. With regard to the pre-K five programs, Rossin, Wish, Sand, West Middle, Burns, Sanchez, Parkville, Moylan, Asian Studies and Naylor. With the pre-K model, pre-K five model, we will go from an average of 50 students to 70 students per grade. The pre-K eight model will still play a role in our community, especially as it supports programming that requires specialized continuum of supports. For example, a recommendation I am making is for M.D. Fox to serve as a dual-language program, which works best when students stay through from pre-K all the way through grade eight. A dual-language program provides literacy and content instruction through two languages, thereby fostering bilingualism and bilinguality, enhancing linguistic awareness, building cross-cultural competence, and promoting high levels of academic achievement for all of our students. With declining enrollment, we unfortunately need to look at closing of some schools. To ensure that we have the right number of kids to make our new elementary and middle school model more effective, we will discontinue two of our pre-K eight programs, Simson Waverly in the north and Batchelder in the south. I also recommend to the board that we think through honoring and preserving the names of schools that are gonna be recommended for closure. These are definitely hard decisions, but they are important to the health of our system. In making these recommendations, we considered a variety of factors, including preserving neighborhood access to schools and minimizing the number of families affected by change. We will aim to preserve school identity and community. For example, pre-K five students currently enrolled at Simson Waverly will be guaranteed, will have guaranteed spots at Wish Museum and at Sand. So these students will end up in the same neighborhood with many of their peers and will feed, they will feed to the same middle school. Batchelder students will be guaranteed spots at Moylan, McDonough, and Caneli, also feeding to the same middle school. To ensure that our students have strong academic pathways through high school, which is something that we heard repeatedly in our community conversations, I also propose changes in grades nine through 12. Today, most of our students attend one of four high schools. While we do have journalism and media in the north, it simply doesn't have enough space, capacity to support all of our students in that neighborhood. So as a result, most high school-age students have to travel across the city to attend Hartford Public High School or Buckley. That, of course, has transportation cost implications. They also, you know, it also means that our students have to get up earlier, right, and spend more time on a bus, which is certainly not what we want for students at this critical time. So in our model of excellence, we will make sure that few changes in the high, we'll have a few changes in the high school level. We know that students from Journalism and Media Academy and High School Link will come together for the New Weaver High School. As a result, we will have three neighborhood high schools spread across the city. This means families don't need to decide between getting their children to school or having to... or having to start their workday in a different way. This configuration will have three strategically sized high schools with access for students in each neighborhood and a natural feeder pattern from neighborhood to elementary and middle schools. Just want to highlight what the feeder pattern would be. The feeder patterns will allow us to begin designing new academic pathways for students to follow from pre-K through twelve. It ensures consistency of experience for all of our students, regardless of the neighborhood school they attend. With that said, I know that families are not limited to the pathways, these pathways. They still have the options that are available through our choice process. But as you can see here, we will have a clearly delineated pathways. For example, students at Rossin and West Middle have a feeder pattern to MLK. And an ideal feeder pattern to Weaver. At the south, students at Burns, Moylan, Parkville, Sanchez. Feed into McDonough. And of course, then to the high schools. Now I'd like to talk about the magnet schools. Currently, we operate nineteen magnet schools. We know that students who attend these schools have access to their resources. But we know that there are unintended consequences, right? The students who do not attend the magnet schools and are left without that access, they're left without access to certain resources. And so this creates, one, a perception and actually, in some cases, actual, a reality and an equity in students' experiences. Some of our magnets also operate in low-quality facilities that are not good learning environments for those students. In the model of excellence, a recommendation would be to co-locate several magnets in existing buildings that currently are in our neighborhood schools. This would enable us to improve the quality of facilities for many of our magnet school students that are Hartford students and create opportunities and partnerships across neighborhood and magnet schools that would benefit all of the students in those buildings. This can be considered a positive step. But it's only one way, one step, one step in our journey. We know that Hartford magnet students, right, we know that these structures come with a set of specific constraints for magnets and conditions that, you know, make it challenging for us to have a more aggressive approach to the reform. We know that they are chef mandates. And so I know that the board, for request, you're going to be meeting in, we're going to be meeting on January second in a workshop to review further options for magnet schools. But I'd like to take a moment to describe what those options could be. Actually, I'm gonna actually go back and just look at the visual one more time so that I can speak to the proposed co-location. We know Kinsella and Weaver as a co-location. Breakthrough Two. And Martin Luther King Middle School. Proposal for Global as a K eight to co-locate with Hartford pre-K Magnet. Burns. To co-locate with Hartford pre-K Magnet offering in the south. And Batonsa STEM to co-locate with Burr Middle School. As a board, and we've had conversations around schools, magnet schools, that are challenged by meeting enrollment, meeting the requirements in certain, in terms of the reduced isolation. We know those schools, we know the ones that are out of compliance, we know the ones that are teetering. We know the efforts that everyone has been making in terms of trying to reach and meet those standards. So I want to talk about the ways that we can apply the guiding principles that we're applying to the neighborhood schools, to more magnet schools. First, we could do what we're doing in neighborhood schools, which is to convert magnet schools to an elementary, middle school model as well. Unlike other options, this doesn't have an immediate financial impact on the district. However, because of current enrollment patterns shifting to an elementary, middle school model for the magnets, risks putting many of our schools out of compliance with the chef desegregation ruling. It also has the potential to disrupt programs that are explicitly designed as K eight models. Second, we could work even harder to recruit or retain suburban families, which would let us increase the number of magnet school seats available. Our efforts have been well documented. And while, while we may have some opportunities to even more, to be even more creative, this is an opportunity that still exists. I want to make sure that I presented all of the possibilities so that when we engage in conversation on January second, we can dig deeper into the data. Other options imply a likely reduction in the number of suburban students we educate in our magnets. Right, changing a status to a neighborhood school, discontinuing the programs, changing status to an open choice, those are all options. But in some cases, this could increase access, and in some cases, it could increase access to our Hartford students. But each of these choices comes with a loss of revenue. For every suburban student who leaves Hartford Magnet School, we would lose between ten and thirteen thousand students, ah, sorry, dollars. Thirteen, ten to thirteen thousand dollars. And so given what we already know, right, given those challenges that I spoke about at the beginning of the presentation, given what we know about our state fiscal condition and our own budget challenges, that decision requires a little more reflection among board members. And so we are gonna have, you know, the workshop on January second, and it is my hope that we can engage in those conversations. It is important that we do come together as a broader community to have these conversations. You know, I wanna, I'm thinking of actually extending an invitation to our state officials, folks at the state, you know, Department of Administrative Services. They are stakeholders in this process and they have to be part of the dialogue as well. And so I, you know, I look forward to further conversation with you prior to January second as to the possibility of having them also at the table to engage in the difficult dialogue. It certainly should not be a dialogue just that Hartford Public Schools that you as a board have to engage in alone because it requires that we look at it from multiple angles as well. The last section of the presentation tonight looks at resource implications. And I'd like to also pose outstanding questions to the board for recommendation. I also want to highlight to those that are leaving. We do have packets that actually outline all of our current forty-six programs and the recommendations for each school by year. This is a phased, three-year process. And I want to make sure that as you exit, you take a packet with you so that you know what the recommendations are. So with regard to the impact, taken together, this is what our school portfolio would look like. Right, so our footprint throughout this city could look very, very different while setting us up for improved student outcomes. So from forty-eight school programs to forty-one programs. From forty-three facilities to thirty-two facilities. Some of these are in leased buildings. So what could Hartford Public High School, Hartford Public Schools look like in 2020? There are only a few benefits that, these are only a few of the benefits that we may be able to accomplish. I just wanted to lift these for us tonight. Clearly pathways from pre-K to twelve in all of the neighborhoods. Facilities quality. Fourteen hundred more students would be in our highest quality facility, rated one and two. We will have no seats in our lowest-rated facilities, facilities that are rated as a level five. Access to resources. Five campuses with co-located magnets and neighborhood schools. Middle grades. That means conditions for stronger grade six through eighth experience, including transitions that support strategically sized grades. Again, the number of schools. Reduce the number of schools to be more in line with, with our peer districts. Utilization. Seventy percent of the students will be in schools with eighty-five percent use. We have some schools now that operate below fifty percent use. And a potential fifteen million dollar in resources that would be available for investment in our students. By moving out of these buildings, they're referenced here. These, some of these are leases, some of these are our own facilities. By moving out of these buildings, we are able to recapture the investments in maintenance and ongoing upkeep that would otherwise be required and divert resources away from our student learning. We want our students to learn in welcoming learning environments. And so that means closing facilities that no longer meet that standard of quality. And focusing upcoming opportunities for facilities improvement on the lowest quality facilities that remain. So implementing the district model of excellence would release four million dollars from the operation of twelve facilities. Another way the model would free up resources by releasing us from the inefficiencies is when we look at staffing. Eleven million from staffing that would be reallocated towards higher impact assignments of staff for our students. If we increase the number of students in school and grades, then schools would be staffed more strategically to support our priorities. So class sizes and other instructional staffing ratios would be closer to our targets. And instructional coaches, assistant principals will be closer also to our targets. And we would be able to reallocate some of, you know, these assignments in a way that meets the needs of our students. Combined, fifteen million dollars at the end of this process would support high priority investments in our students. These are some examples of investments. We know that Hartford Public Schools has been facing significant financial constraints for many years. So the opportunity to free up this amount of money from overhead operations, FIS costs, so that we can invest in high-impact activities is critical to improving outcomes for our students. So again, I want to speak about some examples in terms of investments. This would be at the end of this process, fifteen million dollars a year. So additional non-classroom time for teachers to plan and collaborate. Greater breadth of health, wellness, and enrichment for our students in middle school and high school. Expanded school day and expanded year learning opportunities. Targeted small group sizes and intervention for our students. Increased resources and opportunities to earn college credit and participate in career development. And advisory time for our students to support social and emotional learning. So reinvesting our resources does not mean implementing, right, a wish list after wish list of ideas. It means that we're strategic and that we're intentional in how we use our resources so that we can be more responsible and more impactful for our students. So these recommendations result in benefits for all of our students. By converting pre-K eight into pre-K five and six, eight models, we support more enrichment options and better conditions for teacher professional learning. By creating the elementary, middle, and high school model, we're serving every Hartford community. We support equitable access to school, building clear and logical pathways to graduation. And we're able to serve students in better facilities. By ensuring that all schools serve as community schools, we build deeper community partnerships, provide more services through the community, given the experts in our communities, and always create welcoming environments for our staff, families, and our community, and of course, for our students. And lastly, by creating sustainable-sized and structured schools. Sustainable meaning that we can continue to operate in this way over the years. We then support more flexibility inside of the schools. We ensure that more resources are available for needed programs and we can improve the efficiency of our operation. The biggest reconfiguration changes would take place over the next three years. It allows us to sequence and stage the shifts logically within our capacity to make the transitions collaboratively and responsibly through transition and design teams that are going to be made up of not only district, school, family, and community partners. So remember that on your way out, you can get the packet which includes the description of these proposed recommendations for each school over the next three years. I want to also clarify that, you know, there's a definition for school closure, reconfiguration, relocation, all of those details are in the packet. But just, you know, to kind of give a glance at recommendations for next year. Breakthrough North will reconfigure in their grade. Rossin has a reconfiguration. MLK reconfigures and relocates to create an opportunity for the construction to begin. High School Link relocates. Montessori relocates. Batchelder closes. Simson Waverly closes. The following year, year two of the process, Burns reconfigures, Wish, Sand also reconfigure. Milner reconfigure and relocates. Given the Weaver campus opening, High School Link, JMA, and Kinsella relocate. Capital Community Magnet Academy will close, they're currently being phased out. Culinary will close. And the Milner Middle School will open. It is a recommendation that the Journalism and Media Academy building now will be renamed as Milner Middle School. I do also recommend that other considerations be made to honor the legacies of others that may end up closing. In the last year, June 2020, Asian Studies reconfigures. Burr School will reconfigure to the middle school. Global will reconfigure to a pre-K eight. Naylor reconfigures. West Middle reconfigures, both to pre-K five. Batonsa STEM, as I referenced early, earlier, can relocate to share the campus with Burr Middle. Breakthrough North relocates to the new campus on MLK. Central Office will also relocate. We will be vacating 960 Main. Pre-K Magnet relocates. Renzulli relocates. And M.D. Fox will begin offering a dual-language program. There are options, recommendations, Renzulli potentially classical, Capital Prep to be reconsidered, to be considered by the board. No, a question was raised with regard to adult ed. No, not yet. I'll reference that later, Tiffany. So the next step in the process is certainly to hear your feedback throughout the upcoming meetings, public hearings and conversations. Of course, the board on January twenty-third, you are scheduled to meet, to discuss and make decisions about the future of our of our district. After the vote takes place, we will move into the design phase of the work. And we'll have to think about programs, curriculum and the transitions. So I'm going to near the end of the presentation, but I want to go back to what I started initially around the fact that it is my goal that we walk away with a culture of high expectations in everything that we do. And so we have to create a district culture in which everyone has a sense of belonging, that we all have a sense of ownership, and that we all feel like leaders in this process. Chairman Stallings, before I turn it over to you, I want to acknowledge several things. I want to acknowledge, I actually want to call out. I want to call out the skepticism and the mistrust. Because I know it's real. While while you have not been presented with a district model of excellence before like this, right? I'm sure, I know, you've heard messaging, you've heard promises in the past, right, that change will happen. I want to also acknowledge that there will be many changes. And I know that there are many concerns that you have about your school closing or reconfiguring. So I want to actually also validate the acute pain that families and neighborhoods affected by closures and configuration will experience, that is undeniable. Losing your child's school can feel like a loss of family, loss of comfort, loss of familiarity, friendship supports, loss of the psychological safety, the security of your child. So I want to acknowledge that. You know, these are feelings that I myself reflect on because I also experienced, right, when my mother and my brother had to leave unexpectedly, right? We had to leave our homeland unexpectedly. We had to leave our support network and come to this country, come to this community, this city, this unknown place with this weird thing called the English language. So I know how hard that was. So I will not be proposing changes. I wouldn't be proposing this loss, this difficulty if I did not believe that it is my responsibility as the superintendent and the responsibility of the leaders of the school system to take a path that will lead to better programs and higher achievement over time. And while I cannot speak for previous leaders and why their change efforts did or didn't sustain, or why they did or didn't work, I can think of reasons why this redesign will be successful. So from a personal perspective, I understand. I am rooted in this community. I am from where many of you here tonight are from. I went to these schools, I sat in your children's seats. And at times, I face low expectations. I experienced support also from adults, caring adults. I am committed to our success. This board is just as committed. I see our mayors here also committed, community partners, faith-based leaders, you've been at my table. You have pledged your commitment. This process will be done in partnership with the community. So if approved, the recommendations for closing and reconfiguration, it is not the end. It is where our work begins. It will be hard. I commit that we will continue to work together and demonstrate to our most important learner, our students, the twenty-one thousand beautiful and capable students that we have. That when we identify a challenge, that when we identify a challenge in any process, whether it is this reconfiguration or in their learning, that the best way forward is to dig in, look at the challenge, unpack it, persist and fix it together. So I will be available to you, I will continue to communicate and collaborate with you throughout this journey. We must create high-quality schools for everyone and high expectations for our students and all of the adults in this district and our community.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. I'm not sure if there's any questions. I know we want to get out of here for the sake of time, but I will open up for board members if you have any questions about the presentation. Is anyone? Okay, seeing no questions. We're going to go into our. I said questions from board members, is what I said, sorry, something like that. Oh, Madam Taylor.
So I don't know if this is a question probably for my friends at ERS. On slide number eleven, it says that ninety-six percent of displaced students move into schools with similar or higher quality facilities. What happens to the other four percent?
There's a question for ERS?
I'm not sure, yeah.
What slide are you on?
Eleven, page eleven.
Thank you, Mr. McCauley. Appreciate it above and beyond.
Thank you. So we'll try to answer your questions as much as we can here. And obviously, if there are details that we need to go back and make sure that we have fully buttoned up for your answers, we'll do that. There are the Hartford pre-K magnet schools, right now, I believe are in level three. They're in level one rated facilities. And they're going to move into slightly lower rated facilities, but still among the top tier, right? Oh, they're moving to level four, thank you. So the pre-K facilities, because they're moving into, those are the ones that are being in the co-located facilities. The Hartford pre-K magnets moving to those co-located facilities. Right now, some of those students are in level one facilities and those co-located facilities are are level four right now, so that's a change that would that would affect those four percent of students.
So the four percent are Hartford pre-K magnet students.
Yeah, so, sorry, we're just looking at our notes here.
It's fair, and I put you on the spot.
Yeah, no, it's okay, it's okay. So I. Yes.
Is it helpful for me to pose the question again?
No, that's okay. The Hartford pre-K magnet school is currently in a level one facility. The recommendation is that half the students move in with Burns, which is a level four facility. The other half would move to Global, which is also a level one facility. And so the four percent of students are the ones that are moving that would be co-located at Burns.
Thank you.
Any other question, Ms. Borto?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. I don't know if this is for the superintendent or for ERS. Since this is my last meeting, I won't have a vote on this particular plan, which I'd hoped to, but in any case, I'll probably release a statement with my thoughts on it a little bit more, but I just wanted to kind of have a little bit of grounding in terms of the student and maybe parents' experience. If you could speak to that, so. You know, one of the ironies is that we're saying we're helping neighborhood schools by closing neighborhood schools. So there's kind of a there's kind of something there, right, like you have to like dig out a little bit. And I think it can be worth it if we can demonstrate and really promise that the new experience is going to be quantitative and qualitatively better than the previous experience, right? Like if if we're going to close Simpson Waverly, then we have to be able to promise students and parents at Simpson Waverly that wherever they move to is going to have a better, a better option, a better opportunity there in terms of having, you know, the various things. So if, let's, let's take, could we, I don't know if this is maybe putting you guys on the spot, but could you walk us through this scenario, right? So there's, it says on page eleven, which Karen brought up, Ms. Taylor says there's about twenty-five hundred students that would move, program and location. So let's take a student at Simpson Waverly, Simpson Waverly closes. Where does that student go and what are we saying? How is that student's opportunity better at the next place that they go to? Can you kind of walk us through what that scenario might look like to ground it in what the experience of the parent and the student would look like? Does that make sense?
It does. And I'm going to defer to the superintendent as well, but I'll, I'll offer a couple of thoughts to start. So when we think about the conditions for great teaching and learning in the work that we do helping schools redesign, basically. We often come, come up against schools where the conditions, the, the, the structures that are in place create artificial constraints, right? And the superintendent talked about some of those. So like, to choose an example, the superintendent mentioned, if you only have one or two teachers teaching the same content, it is very difficult to create an environment where teachers can support each other in teaching that content, especially if it's a school where there's a lot of turnover of staff, because you probably have a first-year teacher and a third-year teacher, and so who's leading them? Or if you have two teachers across forty-five students, right? Nice, only twenty-two or twenty-three kids in a class, that's great. But how do you actually create groups of five kids for more time? You can't do that unless the other teacher has forty kids, and that's, that's a challenge too. So I think what, so I mentioned this because some of the small schools that we're looking at here have those conditions that create those challenges. So what the superintendent's putting forward is, is I think a set of necessary steps, but they're not sufficient. Right, it is going to be about what happens once you're in the school. So I think one thing that gets glossed over a little bit in the presentations is the phase of work about design of actually, or I guess called implementation, but it's actually building, designing what happens in these schools next. And I think that's going to be a crucial phase for really answering your question of, so what is the experience of those parents and students going to be like when they, when they move into those schools? We're trying to create conditions where the possibilities are greater. And I would defer back to the superintendent.
I can add to that, Robert. In terms of, you know, making sure that we execute well in terms of a design and then sustainability of the program from an instructional perspective, operational perspective as well. And so, given the fact that in some of the current configurations, we're limited, right? I see those as potential barriers for our ability to be able to offer a comprehensive program in a way that not only supports our students, but our adults as, as learners and practitioners as well. It certainly is a muscle, if you will, Robert, that we as a district have to continue to develop in terms of improving our practice.
So can I just, just a quick step spot? So it sounds like there's I don't want to say, I want to say this politely, there's some there's specific plans, but yet they haven't quite been fleshed out entirely, right? In terms of like, if, if Simpson Waverly, if Batch Elder closes, what the student and family will face in the next place that they go to? I think, I think that's important for people to understand and maybe I think those details matter, right? Because it's like, you know, why, you know, if I'm a parent at Batch Elder, and I actually happen to live down the street from Batch Elder, you know, why do I, why would I support a program that closes the neighborhood school where I'm at? If I can't have any guarantee of what the next place is going to look like? Or at least some idea about, well, guess what, the next school that you'll go to, you know, at Batch Elder doesn't have art, doesn't have music, doesn't have a school counselor. But if you go to Caneli and we merge everybody, then your school will have those things. Do you see what I'm getting at? Same with like class sizes, right? Batch Elder might have very big class sizes, I don't know what the class sizes look like. But at Caneli, you'll have smaller class sizes. So instead of fifteen kids in a kindergarten, you might have ten, right? I don't know, I'm not, I'm not promising that, I'm saying the district needs to be able to kind of give parents an idea of what that would look like to maybe, to convince them that this is a good idea. Otherwise, I think it's, it's a little bit vague, right? So I think moving forward, those are the sorts of things, like if there's a fact sheet that you could give to parents at these schools and say, you know, if and when this school closes, this is, these are your three options, and these are why your three options will be better. Does that make sense? Okay, all right, cool. That's all, it's not like, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, it's just like, I think we need to build that sort of trust and that sort of like understanding that this isn't being done willy-nilly, right? There's a plan and there's a reason why we're doing this. And the reason is to benefit kids so they can like achieve better and have better success overall, right? So anyway, that's what I would say about that. So I think that's helpful moving forward. I also had like I guess some questions about buildings, right? So, you know, if, if we close three schools, what happens to those buildings, right? You know, there's a lot of people that would love to get their hands on buildings. I remember a few years ago, they wanted, the former board wanted to take MLK school and put adult housing there, like senior housing. And that's why they wanted to close the school, right? And so it wasn't about achievement, it wasn't about improvement. And so I'm just curious as to what, what the outlook is on the buildings in the future, right?
So, you know, those are conversations, Robert, that we hope to continue to engage in with our city officials. Knowing that, you know, we do have thinking around, you know, family and community partnership institutes, both in the north and the south of, of the city. However, we know that, you know, you heard me speak about twelve facilities, right? And so it is a conversation that we are engaging in with our, with our city officials. But I know that that's not the only, we're not the only person representative at that table. But it's, it's noted, Rob, Robert, that, you know, when we approached this work, we spoke about schools being at the, at the center, right, of a neighborhood and contributing to the vibrancy of, of a community. So while I don't have an answer, I do have an answer in the sense that we are certainly inviting people to continue that dialogue.
Great, thank you. Last thing I just wanted to say, and it's more of a statement, I guess, than a question, is, you know, I heard you say that, the superintendent, that you wanted to engage state partners around magnet schools and what that looks like relative to neighborhood schools. And I think, I think that's a solid conversation that needs to happen. But, you know, I would say that, you know, going back to the original ERS proposal, or not proposal, but like kind of the analysis and the summary that they put together. I mean, it occurred to me that, you know, if you're talking about a model of excellence, what the magnet schools look like is a model of excellence, right? A racially economically integrated school with high-quality teaching and resources, right? And so I think to the extent that you can get there in all schools, I think is important. But I think what's key is that, you know, our schools are racially and economically isolated. And to, to, to this date, there's been very little evidence that the district can make that happen for every kid. So there's a great deal, I think, of skepticism coming into this, you know, on the part of the public, like can you actually make this happen? So I just, you know, I wish you luck and I hope that there's a great deal of attention to the implementation of how you do this. Because that's, that's really going to be the key to this thing. So I think that's, that's all I have to say about at this point, but thank you.
We'll be hearing from Ms. Borto again, one more time, one more time, Ms. Glenda.
I just had a point of clarification on slide nineteen. When you talked about the, the three purple schools that were going to stay K to eight, and you said there was a programmatic significance to having those three schools be K to eight. So you explained MD Fox is the language and Global is, I know it's IB. What's the Caneli?
So Caneli right now, right, students, you know, the partnership there with the teacher ed program to get their hands on. ed program to get their hands on their teaching experience in Caneli's classrooms. We'd look to continue and/or expand that type of partnership. We're also thinking through expanding the enrichment opportunities for our students throughout the city, and that can be potential, the site where we start cultivating gift and talented programming as a district-wide support strategy. And so right now, Tiffany, it's more of a opportunity for additional conversation in terms of the design. But currently, we know that we have the NEAG school students there, serving as the interns for the aspire, you know, as aspiring educators and allowing them real-world experience in our classrooms, which of course benefits not only our students, but also our teachers.
Any other questions? Any other concerns? So should you have any more questions or concerns, please email, email them to the superintendent, Christina. So what we're gonna do is move on back to our regular meeting agenda. And first item, so we're gonna take up item number six, which are reports. And the first report is reported to the chair. Because of time, I will not go into a deep report. I'll simply say that there is a Hartford Creative Concept Contest, it's a creative writing contest, and the website for that is www.hartfordcontest2017.com. So if you have a student, I think it's fifth grade to 12th grade, if you have a student who is interested in doing that, please go to that website. We had an employee, Judith Fagan, her husband passed away last week, and the funeral was this past Saturday. So on behalf of the board, we want to send our condolences to the Fagan family. And that concludes my chair report. Next is the superintendent's report. And the superintendent doesn't have a report?
No, 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 I actually wanted to reference an event that's happening, the Roberto Clemente event at SMSA on the 31st. We'll have additional details around that, but that's actually the only part that I wanna report. I know that Tiffany, you're gonna reference the, the increase in the students that we continue to receive and serve from Puerto Rico primarily, so I'll let you do that in your report.
Good, all right. First up, family and community engagement. Mr. Flores?
That's the family and community engagement committee that met after summer, six. We continue to monitor and work with school governance councils to help them reach their full complement of 15 members. And it has been challenging to get enough parents to volunteer to services. We know that HSCC is required to have seven parent members. We would also like to have alternate members who can be ready to step in as vacancies occur. So we continue to work on this. We have asked the schools to keep their nominations open until the full complement is achieved. We had planned to work on review of certain SDC policies, but that's stable because Director of Community Engagement had to leave early for a professional development engagement. We received an update on the Hartford Parent Leadership Coalition and invitation to join them in their meetings, and they were gonna identify issues and try to find solutions to them. And the remainder of the meeting was dedicated to discussing logistics to bring parents here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. Policy Committee, Ms. Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, community members. The Policy Committee met on December 8th, and this really, our last meeting was really an opportunity for us to look at some of our safety policies related to OCA report and also human decency. So we looked at non-discrimination policies referring to both personnel and students. We also talked a bit about harassment policies for both personnel and students as well. So in a follow-up to last month's committee meeting and the plan to resolve the non-compliance issue on harassment and non-discrimination policies, the team reviewed the proposed red line policies, and we're moving that this evening for a first read, the non-discrimination policies for both personnel and for students. We looked at shipment and Goodwin model policies in order to kind of merge that. Julie Wild was really instrumental in helping to merge those policies for us to be able to bring forth a first read this evening. We also had a really robust discussion on the definition of harassment and the policies that are supporting the definition for harassment. We also thought it important to discuss what our responsibilities are as board members within our community as it regards to harassment and discrimination. We talked a little bit about, really, so like who is the governing body for us, for board members? This seems to be something that comes up, like are we mandated reporters? Are we subject to the same policies that staff and students are? Why and why not? These are really preliminary discussions that we had at our last committee meeting. Some really interesting things emerged from that. We talked about looking into the Ethics Commission and also to make sure that we include some of these things in the new board member training around really just board member conduct. And in January, we'll talk more about the Central Harassment Prevention Team, and we'll look more about, we'll look more into harassment policies as it relates to personnel, students, and also continue our discussion about board conduct. I think it's really important, as we talk about changing district culture, that we as a board exemplify the things that we expect from both our staff and our students. So I'm really excited about that. So due to that level of conversation, the details that took place, we weren't able to really get much farther than bringing forward the first read for non-discrimination policies this evening. But really, I wanna thank Peter Dart for his help and assistance. He's been working with the Central Harassment Prevention Team and talking a lot about process and procedure, and of course, policy. And I'm really appreciative, appreciative of the work that he's put in and all of the countless hours that he spends coming to the Policy Committee meetings in order to report out and to fine tune his process in response to the action plan for the Office of the Child Advocate Report. I also wanna thank Julie Wild and Michelle Pulick and my members on the Board of Education here, Tiffany Glanville and Mike Bresch for being really just amazing team members. I'm a single parent, I work full-time, I'm on other boards, and the work that they put in on Policy Committee really makes it easy. So I'm incredibly grateful. And I really just wanted to make sure that I acknowledge them as we close out this year, because we inherited a lot of work and they really have been exemplary team members. And that concludes the Policy Committee report.
Thank you, thank you, Tammy. Thank you. Am I, am I, okay, thanks. She's also on the library board too, so she's working really hard, she's being modest. So next committee, teaching and learning. Mr. Coto?
Teaching and Learning Committee met on December 11th, Monday. In attendance, where I wanna make sure I get everyone's name, we had Mike Bresch, a board member, Tiffany Glanville caught the tail end of the meeting. In terms of staff, we had Sonia Denal, Abby Olinger Quint, Chris Woods, Richard Lindwall, and June Sellers, and last but not least, Christina Santiago. The bulk of the meeting was spent on talking about student, the student assessment system for people that have Power School, that parents that know about Power School, teachers use Power School. There's a whole broader system to that. And basically, the idea that the staff folks are trying to show us is that the school district is recording, monitoring, analyzing different student achievement data. And they're following that very closely, particularly in reading and in math. And they gave us a demonstration of what that looks like. This is something that we've done in different ways over the years, but I think we're, we're getting our act together in more intentional ways and also just being smarter about how we do that. So we got kind of a demonstration as to what the district can see, and they can literally see how students are doing in math and reading at the student level, classroom level, grade level, district level. And I think, you know, one of the questions that I had that I'll just throw out there as far as being a board member is, you know, how can we use this to improve our school system, put resources where they need to be put, you know, help people, basically? I think that's like the bottom line as far as like what we can do with it. We also, I'll just add a point that I brought up. One of the, if we're thinking about doing dual language, right? You saw the presentation, dual language at MD Fox, maybe other places. Dual language is when students learn, you know, part of the time in English or whatever language, English, Spanish could be in other languages as well. One of the problems with the student assessment system is that all the assessments or the tests are all in English, even for our students that are identified as bilingual. So one of the questions I had is, is this giving us accurate reading as far as what our students can do in math and reading? So that's a question that I had. Finally, we got Sonia Denal brought us an update as far as what we're doing in terms of career and technical education at a couple of the different sites, mostly the schools that will eventually be at the New Weaver, the New Weaver Campus, which will be the refurbished Weaver Campus. So yeah, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coto.
Yep.
Appreciate that. Forgive me, I went out of order. So I will go back to school choice and facilities. And Ms. Glanville, forgive me.
Thank you. School Choice and Facilities Committee met on, I might give that wrong. Met on December 11th. Dr. Colon Rivas presented revised ed specs for, for Weaver, which contained input from the Weaver Steering Committee, student learning experience work, student learning experience work groups, Family and Community Engagement Work Group, and the School Culture and Climate Work Group. The, the ed specs that we, we received a presentation on included a lot, a lot of input from these groups. Two points of input that are not going, that are not gonna be included in the ed specs was having it, have it, one principle for the Weaver High School Inc. and JMA combination, that that will not be included in the ed specs. It doesn't mean that it won't happen, it's just not something that at this point, the district is ready to make that specific of a decision about to include it in the ed specs. And the other, the other requests coming from the groups that will also not make its way into the ed specs is that the Kinsella have, right now, it's, has 400 students and Weaver combined JMA High School Inc. would have 500 students, and the request was that the Weaver combined JMA and High School Inc. would have 600 students, and Kinsella would only have 300, and that is also not gonna be a seat configuration that will be in the ed specs. We, and on that point, we, I've received later information to, one of the, one of the points I raised was, is there a way that we can look at creating more pathway seats into Kinsella as Kinsella, but ensuring that more north-end students, because Kinsella is located in the south end right now, actually will have access to Kinsella at high school so effectively, you know, would still be serving the, the neighborhood, though it is, you know, still a magnet school. And so we, we talked about the potential for expanding that pathway. No, no conclusions were made on that. That's gonna be, and that wouldn't be something that would necessarily be in the ed specs. But one of the potential barriers to that, though, if we did learn, was that Kinsella High School as a standalone high school, not counting it together with the lower pre-K to eight Kinsella, has compliance challenges, has chef compliance challenges. If, if, it, it, in and of itself, just the high school, I think, we received information, it was about 21 to 22% compliant, 21 to 22% of the student body of reduced isolation students, which isn't at the 25% mark. So there would be a real challenge there to any potential new pathway seats coming into the school and not counting it together with the lower school, which apparently is, has a much higher compliance rate, it has much more reduced isolation students in the south end. And I just wanted to like put a pin in that, because I think that that's something that we really need to think through. You know, geographically, like we're, it seems like a sort of a disingenuous way of, of measuring compliance when, you know, we're counting a school altogether as a pre-K to 12, even though like the pre-K to eight students are completely on like polar opposite corner of the city and they're never gonna interact with the high school students, so it's, you know, but they're, but to be integrated, we have to count them together. So I just wanna, you know, put a pin in that for later conversation, because I think it's something we need to think through. And it's gonna affect, you know, options that we have for making Kinsella, you know, have more pathway seats. So as far as the Weaver ed specs are concerned, for everybody interested, we are gonna have them on our agenda item for the next facilities and choice meeting as well. So if you're interested in discussing them more, learning more, please note that. And also, they will be, so as of right now, they're, they're headed for that meeting and then they will come before the board in January for our vote on the ed specs. So that's moving forward. We had a choice update on the choice marketing and recruitment season. So far, we have 2,284 first-choice lottery applications to Resco, 1,121 Hartford, 1,163 suburban. Hartford's district lottery has, so far, has had 329 first-choice lottery applications to date, well, as of the date of our meeting on the 11th. And the staff, the choice staff is conducting outreach and recruiting and application assistance sessions to support families in this process. As Dr. Torres Rodriguez mentioned, we had a report on the placement for displaced families. Choice has placed 332 students displaced by the various hurricanes as of December 11th. We are monitoring capacity at our district schools to manage the volume. High school students arriving are being placed at HPS, at Hartford Public High School, since Buckley is actually at capacity now for resources and staffing. We also talked about how affordable housing for these families is going to continue to be a concern, as there's already a shortage of this kind of housing in the city, and as many of these families are moving from just staying temporarily with relatives to actually needing longer-term housing. This is just a challenge, obviously, beyond the scope of just the Board of Ed, but something that we should all keep in mind. And then as a note, after the holidays, choice typically sees an increase in families arriving to Hartford, so we expect January also to be just a busy volume month for choice in addition to the families that are receiving, the displaced families that we're receiving. The Office of Operations has embarked on an initiative to centralize the registration process at our schools, so we had a report about how that process is working. There's gonna be, for this year, starting 10 pilot schools, a mix of magnet and neighborhood schools, elementary and high schools, where the registration process will be shifted to the school, more of a school-based process. It's gonna be more efficient, easy for families, and the majority of forms will be able to be completed online. There'll be like a one-stop shop for, for placement and registration at centralized locations. So that's something that the district is undertaking now, 10 schools. And then lastly, we had a preliminary discussion around control choice. We decided that maybe we needed to have a different name for it, because control choice has some like academic and education implications around what that means and different models. But really, what we had a discussion around was transportation and zoning. I guess is what we decided we should sort of term it for, for now. But basically, a preliminary discussion on cost being a main driver for considering how we overlay choice to our various theme schools, especially where we have like duplication of themes in various parts of the city, and how we can make that more efficient and equitable for our, our savings and bottom line. And obviously, it dovetails into the, like, subsequent conversations that I'm sure we're gonna be having around the model of for excellence. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Glanville. And Finance and Audit Committee, I'll keep it really, really, really brief and simply say, we, the budget timeline has been established and there will be some adjustments. Because of the superintendent's recommendation today, some of the schools that are affected will have to adjust their budget process. And so we will have to explore the possibility of taking one school's budget and merging it with another school to make sure that these schools are resourced, given the fact that the CFO will be leaving, we would have to wait for the superintendent to appoint or hire a, a stand-in for her. And as a result of that, that was going to affect the school budgeting process. So the schools are working with their preliminary budgets now, and that process will start with Central Office somewhat, I think, maybe the second week of January. And we also have to explore our budgeting process. So we used to employ SBB, Student-Based Budget, but we need to create more stabilized budgeting process. Budget, but we need to create a more stabilized budgeting process, so we will start to explore that process as well. I'm not sure we'll have that completed by the end of the budget process, but we will start that. And then, we are going to do a budget analysis, because we want to make sure that the district can afford and generate revenue and receive resources for education for years to come. So, we want to explore, not necessarily cutting more schools, but we want to make sure that we are, are going to hit our target, and if we have to readjust our consolidation, then we adjust our consolidation, but we're going to begin and finish that process. So, we, through committee, may make some recommendations later on. And so, that concludes our finance report. Now, I, as Chair, I can't take point of order myself, but we, as a result of the technical difficulties, we did not take care of some general housekeeping items, so now that Ms. Santiago is not playing with the overhead projector, she can take the role, because we never took our role call, and we can do that before we get into budgets and take official votes. So, Ms. Santiago.
All right. Craig Stahli.
Here.
Tiffany Glanville.
Here.
Karen Taylor.
Here.
Julio Flores.
Here.
Robert Cotto Jr.
Here.
Michael Bresch, Kimberly Oliver.
Here.
Juan Hernandez.
Here.
Richard Waring.
Here.
Thank you so much, and I, for the sake of time, I will just read one of the two other statements that I had. So, we, as you know, tonight, we are going to lose a board member, a board member who has been here, has done a lot of great work, not just as a board member, but is doing tremendous work in our community and the higher learning community. Robert Cotto is a class act, and I'm just going to read this, and if other board members want to chime in, please feel free. So, Mr. Cotto has been a member of the board since 2010. He served as Secretary of the Board, Policy Chair, Policy Committee Chair, and most recently, the inaugural Chair of the Teaching and Learning Committee, which we're all proud of. Robert Cotto Jr. is currently the Director of Urban Educational Initiatives at Trinity College and a lecturer in the Educational Studies Department. Before his work at Trinity, he was a Senior Policy Fellow in the K to 12 Education for CT Voices for Children, where he published reports on Connecticut testing systems, school, public school choice, and K to 12 education data and policy. And prior to that, he taught for seven years at, excuse me, seven years as a social study teacher at Metro Polton Learning Center for Global and International Studies, MLC, and he was my cousin's teacher, awesome guy. Not to mention, he currently earns, he's currently earning his PhD in Learning Leadership and Education Policy at the University of Connecticut. He's a new father of a beautiful baby boy. Robert has been an advocate for teachers, students, and the community, and he will definitely be missed. And if there's anyone else who wants to say something on behalf of Robert, please feel free. Anyone else sum it up? Okay.
What?
Uh, no, no. Go ahead, continue.
I'm going to say something, you're not getting with it.
I'm not.
So, I tried to convince Robert to run again.
Yes.
Many times, he declined. Robert is by far, I think, one of the most thoughtful, knowledgeable, reasonable board members. He makes space for other board members. I remember when I first came on the board, Robert was one of the people who, when I didn't quite have it together to ask my question, would like help me to rephrase it, right? Like back up? It's like, oh, like what she's trying, I think what she's trying to say is this, right? He's the kind of person that when you give him an award, he not only thanks friends and family, but he thanks the team. He lets everyone know exactly how he got there and all the contributions that were brought to the table. I think that he is an exemplary human, he's a wonderful person. I'm really going to miss him on the board as a colleague, and I look forward to reading his commentary on all of us at his blog that he does for Educational Studies with Trinity College.
Yes, Ms. Glanville.
I first met Robert when I was a parent, before I was on the board, because he was just one of the most accessible, caring board members who really cared about, you know, our neighborhood schools and our magnet schools and all of our babies, and I just, I went to him for, you know, some advocacy, probably in myself ended up here, but I think it's kind of fun, because Robert now is going to be a parent, and I'm on the board and he'll be off the board, so, you know, you can come knocking on our door now as your, as your son comes through the school system, but I just, I'm really going to miss Robert, because not only has he been a source of great insight and knowledge on this board, but he's also been a very level-headed, witty source of humor and, and just, just keeping us all sort of on our toes, and I'm kind of in denial that he's leaving. But yeah, we're really going to miss you.
Sure. Just a quick thank you to everybody that's been committed to our public school system, the board members here. You guys put in the high-paid work, well, some of us at least, put in the high-paid work. Actually, we don't, we don't get paid here, but you guys do the work here on the board, and all those staff members, the parents, everybody have really come together. I think, I'm sad that I'm leaving, but I'm also, I'm looking forward to the fact that I think by far, in my eight years here, this group of people that are sitting here at the table are the most committed folks to our school system and working together and making positive change. I really, I really do believe that this is, the board is in the best hands it's been in in a very long time, and also, our superintendent, so thank you for the recognition, that's more than, more than necessary, more than, I didn't need that, it's totally cool. And finally, just a quick shout-out to my wife, Yana, who's home putting the baby to sleep, he's one years old, and a big shout-out to my brother, Matt, and my mother, Anita. So, thank you, guys, appreciate it.
On behalf of the board, Mr. Waring will present what we have. I'm going to read the first one.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we have a gift from Mr. Coto, which I'll present to him, and it says, "Presented to Robert Cotto Jr. with deepest appreciation for your tireless service and commitment to the students of the Hartford Public Schools. Member of the Hartford Board of Education 2010 to 2017. It was a pleasure to serve with you, Robert, and I miss you."
Thank you.
We're going to wait for another meeting, because hopefully, Mike will come, because I would love to honor Mike while he's here, because Mike is also a very important board member and one of my running, one of my running mates, and I'm proud of Mike. So, we're just going to move on to business. So, on our business agenda, first item, administrative appointments. The Hartford Board of Education approved the superintendent's recommendation to appoint the following individuals to positions indicated. Brooke Laffernier, Mrs. Brooke Laffernier, excuse me, law financier, forgive me for that, circle through it, to the position of Principal of Classical Magnet, effective December 20, 2017. Is there a motion?
Move.
It's been moved and seconded, it's been moved and seconded. Madam Superintendent?
Yes. Brooke Laffernier has worked in education for the past decade. She began her career as an English teacher at Global Experienced Magnet School in Bloomfield. She has served as a teacher, curriculum specialist, and principal. She is a proven leader who has built extended pathways for overage and undercredited youth from diverse cultural, ethnic, and socioeconomic backgrounds. Most recently, Brooke has served as Hartford Public Schools Classical Magnet Acting Principal, where she has impacted the community. You know, as I read through some of the comments from the SGC, we were told that Ms. Laffernier is a relationship-oriented, definitely puts kids first, cultivates a climate that fosters accountability, and solutions that drive positive student outcomes. She remains calm when dealing with difficult, challenging situations, and in a short period of time, has been come to be known by name, by, for, by students, by staff, by families, by our community. Prior to coming to join us at Hartford Public Schools, she served as Principal of PACT Academy in Wyndham, Connecticut, where she developed an alternative accountability matrix, enhanced school communities through positive behavioral intervention supports, and developed community partnerships for volunteer and internship opportunities for students. She has earned a six-year degree in Ed Leadership from UConn, Master's of Arts in Ed Education, also from UConn, and a Bachelor's in Science in English Ed from UConn as well.
Would you like to carry us anything?
Absolutely. So, first of all, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you all today. I'd like to say a particular thank you to the five families who have decided to join me this afternoon, or this evening, for a very long board meeting. It has been a distinct pleasure to be able to work with the families and students at Classical Magnet for the last five months. It has been a completely eye-opening experience, being new to Hartford, seeing the superintendent navigating the consolidation phase, and I see it as an immense opportunity for potential to develop an extensive, efficient, and effective program, and I am very excited to see how classical fits into that. I look forward to serving the community as I have done in the last five months, and to continue to form relationships with all of you.
Thank you. All right, so, let me get mine, get ready. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Eyes happy. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Subsection B, Dr. Alberto Vasquez Montos to the position of Deputy Superintendent, effective January 8, 2018. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, Dr. Vasquez Montos was born in Puerto Rico and raised in New York. He has worked in education for the last, for the past 18-plus years, beginning his career as an adjunct professor for universities throughout the country. Dr. Vasquez Montos has served as a teacher, academic dean, assistant principal, principal, associate superintendent, and superintendent and chief of staff. He is known for being a visionary insight, for his visionary insight and dedication to the mission of providing excellence in education for all students. Clearly, you all received his information and his extensive history and record. I want to just highlight that most recently, Dr. Vatos Masquez has served as Chief of Staff at Hillsborough County Schools in Tampa, Florida, where he has managed the operational structure of the organization while devising executive strategies for a sizable system of operational efficiency. He served as a key strategic advisor for district initiatives, specifically in the area of organizational effectiveness, developed a set of benchmarks and standards for schools aligned with the state standards in Florida. He, just want to mention that the district is over 230,000 students, and Dr. Vasquez Montos has earned several recognitions and awards in education throughout his career, most recently, the Florida Latino Administrator of the Year in 2017. He has earned the following degrees, Doctor in Education and Administration from Walden University, Professional Diploma in Advanced Leadership Studies from Manhattan College, Master's of Education in School Administration, also Manhattan College, and a Bachelor of Arts in Spanish and Secondary Education from St. Thomas Aquinas College. Dr. Vasquez Montos.
Is there a motion?
Move.
Is there a second? Is there any debate or any questions for Mr., for Dr. Montos? Erin Duff?
I do want to say that, you know, because this position is new, and the fact that, you know, the district is also looking at scaling back in some areas, that it really is unprecedented, but I looked over your credentials and your experience, and I think that you are an unprecedented individual, and I'm really excited to have you coming to our district. So, I'm glad that you chose to come to Hartford to do this work with us, so welcome.
Thank you. Sorry.
So, Erin, any questions, any debate? No, oh, I'm sorry. Please, by all means, if you want to address the vote, forgive me, thank you.
Honorable school members, Superintendent Torres Rodriguez, and the Hartford Public School, School Community, I thank you for this opportunity, this wonderful opportunity. I am humbled and honored by your vote to uphold the superintendent's recommendation, but as well as the recommendation of Dr. Torres Rodriguez for me to, to work for her and with her in this courageous, bold, and brave initiative that serves the best interests of the students of Hartford Public Schools. And I'm excited and eager to join this team with a lot of energy, enthusiasm, an empathetic ear, and a compassion to be the voice of the students of Hartford Public Schools. So, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, you're very welcome. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The eyes happy. Congratulations, thank you, you're welcome. Okay, so, next, item number two, first reading, various Hartford Public School policies. We do not have the vote on them. Ms. Taylor, do you want to read them?
Not particularly, this is for a first read. We looked at model policies from Shipman and Goodwin, we were moving this for a first read, just the policies. You're welcome to view the redline versions in your packet, if you have questions, I will welcome them, but otherwise, I would like to just move this for a first read, because Policy Committee has a long agenda of things to accomplish for this academic year.
Okay, all right, thank you, thanks so much. All right, so, like I said, that does require a vote. And item number three, first read, proposals, school calendar, 2018, 2019. The Hartford Education accepts the first reading of the proposed 2018, 2019 school calendar, and I don't know if you want to review that, Madam Superintendent, or?
So, in terms of some background, the recommended calendar continues to reflect the following elements, elementary early start in July and August, one early release day and full professional development day per month during the school year, except in, in April. Additionally, our school calendar continues to be in alignment with the regional calendar. It is a state initiative based on legislation. The legislation created a state task force that facilitated a process that would allow the districts and other representatives within the greater Hartford region, area, to come to agreement and to adopt a regional calendar. We know that we obviously live within the larger ecosystem of our region, of course, you know, there's a, we service students from all of the region as well, and so, this calendar certainly remains in alignment with that. Just my background.
Thank you so much, all right. And so, again, that doesn't require a vote, so we're going to move forward, and we're going to take the consent item, there's only one item for consent, and if there are a point of order?
I, um, Chair, I have to recuse myself for this vote, as I actually sit on the Hartford Partnership for Student Success partnership team.
All right, thank you so much. So, that is noted for the record that Ms. Oliver is recusing herself for this particular vote. Is there a motion to take the consent item as one agenda?
So, move.
Is there a second? All right. All in favor, give me a second, let me just read it. Item four on consent is a payment approval, Hartford Partnership for Student Success, $95,000. The School-Community Partnership was convened in 27, excuse me, 2007, to act as the planning body for the development and community, of community schools at Hartford. The community schools model was selected for its focus on whole-child development and the integration with the school day for the purpose of supporting student achievement and merger reforms efforts for the Hartford Public Schools. The partnership was, the partnership will include the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving, the City of Hartford, United Way, Hartford Public Schools, the Hartford, and EDNA voted to expand the scope of the partnership, focus, focus and establish the Hartford Partnership for Student Success. The Hartford Board of Education authorized the superintendent to issue payment in the amount of $95,000 to the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving as partnership fiscal agent and employer of record. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. Is there?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you so much. We stand in adjournment.
Saludos. Estoy orgullosa de ser su superintendente, la doctora Leslie Torres Rodriguez. Estoy dirigiendo el proceso crucial de reimaginar y reestructurar nuestro distrito escolar. Necesito que ustedes, todos ustedes, tengan una participación significativa en nuestro proceso. Estamos haciendo esta labor crucial para cumplir nuestro compromiso, garantizar mejores resultados para los estudiantes y un acceso equitativo a los recursos para todos y cada uno de nuestros estudiantes hermosos y competentes. Cuando hayamos completado este proceso juntos, tendremos en nuestras manos un distrito escolar más fuerte y más equitativo, diseñado para servir bien a todos los estudiantes, y un plan construido por toda la comunidad para el beneficio de toda la comunidad. Nosotros en las escuelas públicas de Hartford estamos coordinando este proceso, pero ustedes, la comunidad, las familias, los estudiantes, los maestros, y todos nuestros socios son las voces y las mentes que orientan este trabajo. Al compartir sus opiniones, ustedes ayudarán a crear nuestro modelo del distrito. Nuestro trabajo en conjunto, que se llevará a cabo durante los próximos meses en reuniones comunitarias con familias, socios, y escuelas, culminará con la presentación de recomendaciones para modelos de excelencia del distrito. Estos modelos demostrarán diferentes maneras en que el distrito puede ser reimaginado, tomando en consideración la condición y viabilidad de nuestros vecindarios, y garantizando el acceso continuo de oportunidades y servicios a nuestras familias y estudiantes. Para obtener más noticias sobre este proceso, visite nuestra página del web del distrito en www.hartforschools.org.